One issue hundred dollars. Invisible with three investments for all.
Didn't do this last night, wouldn't have no power.
Yeah.
Were you at Cooper?
Yeah, I ran my generator for like three hours and they were turning about it for an hour. I didn't know.
Cause you would cover.
Probably about sixteen dollars in gas for the generator.
All right, roll call. Christie Rowe.
Here.
Fred Sodamire.
Here.
Terry Comalani.
Here.
Dewey Robbins is excused. Kay Jones is present. All right, our agenda. What we were motion to. After you reviewed the agenda. Or approve.
I move through the agenda.
To approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Brad. We have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Um, and we'll take unless there's further discussion, we'll vote. Tracy Rowe.
Aye.
Fred Sodamire.
Aye.
Terry Comalani.
Aye.
Kay Jones, also I, motion hearings. So our new business and our. First on new business is KGDB firearm prohibited. Sample but sample policy. And so at this point, I'm going to ask what use our cups. If we want to speak on the subject. Um. You need. Cups as well to help answer and.
Yeah, and then I had some opening.
All right, I appreciate those first.
Nice.
All right, Brad, you'll share with us for opening remarks.
Good evening, thank you. I first wanted to thank you for taking the time to be listeners around this topic. Uh, we've got two listening sessions during which we heard from administrators, staff, and the public. I'd like to take a few minutes tonight and recap the initial discussion. And, um, general feelings expressed in the district's perspective on this new optional policy. As an overview and reminder, policy JFCJ, weapons in schools, is already existing policy. And prevents students from bringing weapons to school. This policy is grounded in state law and is not a topic in tonight's discussion. Policy KGDB, however, uh, is firearms prohibited. Is a new proposed policy by OSBA. And is considered conditionally required. Meaning that if the district wants to prohibit concealed carry licensees. From carrying firearms on district property, the district must adopt a policy. If the district does not want to limit concealed carrying licensees, the district does not need to adopt this policy. In the policy committee late in the spring of twenty twenty-two, a conversation began and it was decided to have two listening sessions. One with district staff and one with the general public. Following those sessions, it was decided to hold a work session, which is what we're doing tonight. To see if there'd be a consensus on the topic in the board will vote in August on whether we want to adopt this policy. So that's the summary of events that has led us here tonight. Now, any topics surrounding guns is controversial soon, and there are different viewpoints. I'd first like to share with the board from a district's perspective, why we need policy in general, not just this policy, but policy in general. We have policy in place so that we can put limits on certain behavior. It becomes very difficult to limit actions or behavior of the public. Or students when there is no policy in place. Adopting this policy allows principals and myself the ability to say that we do not need firearms in school. Period. That if you have a concealed weapon license, that you must leave the weapon in your car before walking into the school. Violating this policy allows us to give a trespass citation to that person if they fail to comply. After being asked not to do. Not having this policy prevents us from having that discussion with visitors to our school. Our participants from the public refer to these people as Joe Public. And I like that, so I'm just gonna use that tonight in my comments. Concealed weapons are not allowed in federal warehouses, federal buildings. Any building owned, leased, or rented by the federal government. Buildings in national forests. Visitor centers, ranger stations. And national parks. Sterile areas of airports or when attempting to board an aircraft will go through screen. Federal prisons. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, national cemeteries, military bases, post offices. Postal regulations prohibit the possession of firearm in their buildings and in their parking lots or any property they own. Any building on the BLM land operated by the federal government is considered private property and carry in mode will be not allowed. The question becomes, why would we put limitations on concealed carry licensees in national cemeteries? And ranger stations and federal buildings, but allow them in schools? Why is it important to allow Joe Public the ability to carry a gun when they visit a teacher or a principal? Why do we feel it's important to allow that? I'll say we do, but I'm just saying, but in general, that's what the issue is tonight. Is it unreasonable to ask them to leave in their car? You heard very clearly from district staff that they do not want guns in schools. You heard from administrators that they have guns themselves and a couple with concealed carry licenses. But none of them believe they belong in their school. Why is that? I too am a gun owner and believe in our second amendment rights to their arms, but I do not believe they have a place here in our schools. Our administrators shared that they have had to deal with more extremely angry parents over the last few years. They shared the fear that would have of dealing with an irate parent. If that person had a concealed weapon. One could argue that the administrator might not even know, and that's true. But if it was visible in some way, that would be very intimidating and unsettling. Our public, the few who came and gave insight, were generally in favor of concealed weapons in school. But it was interesting that they were in favor of teachers having guns to prevent a potential shooter, but that they were not in favor of Joe Public coming to the gun. While I can appreciate the sentiment that our teachers can help stop a school shooter, not adopting this policy will not then produce a group of teachers with guns. In general, teachers don't bring guns to school and they will not start to do so because the board likes to not adopt this policy. Finally, let me share with you some of the challenges we've had with our students recently. This past year, we have seen more anxiety, depression, and anxiety-induced seizures than we have ever seen in our careers. Some mornings, it's not uncommon to find a student on the floor in a fetal position crying and dealing with extreme anxiety. Some can't come to school. Last year, a knife was brought to school and confiscated, and the student anxiety went through the roof, and that was a knife. You can better believe that these kids watch the news and see Uvalde and other mass shootings. We have drills in case there are shooters, and all of these guns cause heightened anxiety and fear. Why would we then say that it's okay for Joe Public, a visitor, to bring a gun to school as long as it's concealed? Why would we allow a firearm into an elementary school? Or any school? Under what scenario would that be okay? There is a reason that our leaders, who are all gun owners and supporters of gun rights, are saying no to having it in school. It is because they are living a reality with children daily. Where having a visitor come with a gun only invites more fear and anxiety. That's not helpful and it's not worth it. Again, adopting or not adopting this policy will not provide more teachers with guns in classrooms. The idea that our kids will be safer by allowing teachers to conceal carry guns is not a reality. We will not suddenly have a group of teachers with guns. We don't have that now, and carrying concealed weapons is currently allowed. Again, we may not know what people are carrying when they visit. But this policy helps us by being able to post signs. And if we see them, being able to have a conversation. Currently, there's nothing you can say or report. What we are talking about here is Joe Public, allowing Joe Public the ability to carry firearms into our school. Right now, they can. By adopting this policy, we are allowing our leaders and myself to say no. Please leave them in the park. And I think the question of the board tonight is this. Why do we want to allow visitors the ability to bring in their firearm? Why is that important? And why would we want to do that when you heard clearly from our leaders and staff that they do not want? Those are my opening comments, thank you.
Thank you. At this point, it's open for board members to make comments and present their. My view.
I'm gonna reserve my comments as the final speaker.
Brad?
Uh, I have a question, actually. Um, you said that if we adopt this policy, it would allow you, uh, basically you don't have any tools in place right now to, if someone comes in with a. Concealed carry license and you, you basically, you can't ask them to leave. This would allow you to issue a trespass. Is that correct? Uh, yeah, I mean, we could always say, hey, can you just keep it in your car? But if they say no, that's my right to do that, then I can't do it. Um, how many instances can you think of since you've been here that you would have, uh, if this policy would have been in place ten years ago, that you would have, uh. Asked a concealed carry holder to, uh, to return the firearm to their vehicle?
In the last five years that I've been here, uh, this is going to be the last four years I've been here, we haven't had enough information.
Did you want me to use my cup?
No, you don't have to.
Well, I appreciate that. Cup kind of drives me a little crazy, but, um. I, so just in general, I've, I've actually took quite a few hours and. This is a difficult, uh, subject to do research on, um, but one thing I'm positive of, of, uh, all the, uh, administrators and staff. And the public that testified and yourself and every single person in this room, I think we all have the same goal, we want to keep kids safe. And so, um, it's important to me and I, I, you know, in general, don't have a lot of time to spare, and I spent quite a bit of time on this, and it was difficult. Because it's politicized and it was hard to get. Uh, the, just the facts, if you will. You can, you know, there's websites out there called concealed carry ports. And it all concealed carries bad and they just get the license so that they can, uh, perpetrate crime. And then. On the other side is, uh, you know, if everybody was concealed carry, they wouldn't be. So I tried to go for just the facts and. And did some research on this from, uh, you know, and I'll, and I'll share this with the entire, the two resources that I spent enough time researching were from the, uh. U.S. Secret Service, uh, Save School Initiative Report and, um. The, this one was sponsored, you really gotta be careful who you're sponsored by, but this one was sponsored by the American Council of the Association. Uh, it, it was actually pretty eye-opening and, um, one of the things that. Cause, cause I wanna know if this would have, uh, prevented, you know, if having this policy, whatever. Cause let's face it, we're trying to prevent matches, right? I mean, that's what's on the news and everything else. We want to stop somebody coming to school performing a, a mass shooting, if you will. Um, one interesting fact, so the first school shooting took place and this has been happening in the first time that was recorded in seventeen sixty-four, so it's not a whole. Uh, or it's not a new problem. Um. And so there is certain demographics and sixty-nine percent, uh, of, uh, people committing violent acts using a gun within the school. Were between ten and nineteen years of age. And basically, I'll, I'll just tell you what my conclusion is, and, and I do have a dog in the fight. I'm a concealed carry weapon holder myself. Um, but that wouldn't deter me from, uh, one way or another on this. I went into an open line. And I think something we have to remember here is you kept referring to Joe Public, it's what you, you call him, and Joe, Joe Public, um. A concealed carry holder isn't Joe Public. Uh, Joe Public. Nobody that enters that school has to have a background check. Nobody that enters that school has to have firearm training. It's, it is literally why that's what I would consider Joe Public. If a concealed carry hold license holder, you have to have, I'd like to see it to be more training. But you have to have a certain amount of training. You have to have a thorough background check. They are not Joe Public whatsoever. They're, they're, I, I, I'm sure they're out there. There's bad apples in, in every barrel, if you will, but. I haven't met too many, uh, concealed carry holders that are career criminals or that have malicious intent. I couldn't come up with a statistic one way or another on the, uh, percentage of school shooters that did have a concealed carry license. Um, but I couldn't, I, I would imagine that if there was, it would be pretty well-known on the media. Let's just say that, and, uh, I, I couldn't find not even one, and it seems like most of them, unfortunately, are school-aged children. Um, and I would like, uh, Brad mentioned a couple of comments from the teachers and staffs and. Um, one of the comments was that they had ran into some parents that were angry and not behaving. I believe that was at maybe a sporting event or something like that. And they said, you know, they were disregarding the rules and they just couldn't imagine if they, you know, had a firearm on them. Well, and this, this piece of paper isn't gonna stop somebody. This, it's not, it, it's not a physical barrier. It's a suggestion. And it may be a tool. I don't know if it would ever get used, and I would imagine there's been quite a few concealed carry holders in your school. Um, I, I know where it has been, and that's the whole point, you were concealed, you don't know, but. You know, they were talking about disrespecting rules. I don't think the rule is gonna stop this. And just something else, you talked about all the areas and all the areas you said were true, that prohibit firearms. That's absolutely true, but, um. I, I actually, not too long after the second listening session, I had to go to the bank, which I don't very much. So I, I actually looked around the outside and all banks will either, uh, you know, if they prohibit firearms, opposed it, but it's not. It, our bank allows concealed carry holders to come inside the bank. I talked to them a little bit about it and they're, and they said, yeah, I may, I, that is no, uh, even our small town bank here has been wronged, but I, I just wanted to clear that up. That, uh, that's not the law or, uh, it, it's, it's up to each individual bank. I'm not for, uh. I, I am absolutely not for, uh, voting for this to put it into. To policy, but at the same time, there was another, uh, member of the public that mentioned that, um, they would be in favor of armed teachers, and I think we need to be very careful. In, in, in that regard too. Um, I'm not opposed to it, but I, I definitely would not. Promote it without, um, proper training. So I, I just want that to be known. And, uh, I. There are a lot of ways to prevent shootings on, on school grounds, and I don't know, uh, what we're doing to do that, if, uh, what the security of our schools is, if, if the doors are locked from. The outside when school's in session, if there, if we do have counselors that are training. And, uh, one thing that I did glean from all the research that I've done was almost every single school shooting, people knew about it and nobody. Mentioned it or said something. They, they saw something, didn't say something. It was on social media. There was all, almost every single time, there was all these warning signs. And, uh, if you're not trained, uh, you know, mainly the, unfortunately, the school, uh, counselors and, and teachers, if you're not trained to spot these signs. Uh, I'm definitely not blaming them because, but there are some preventative actions you can take. And some of them even went so far as to say, uh, you know, restricting access to guns. Now, I'm not advocating that we go, you know, into parents', uh, houses or anything like that, but. There, there are some educational things that we can, uh, put out within the district that are completely legal that bring up this topic. And, uh, suggestions, if you will, that the parents do keep their, uh, firearms secure, and that conversation can take place after. Uh, the trained counselor sees these warning signs out there that, um, you know, hey, there, there is an issue here. It could escalate. And that that is a conversation that the district can have with the parents about, uh, unsecured firearms within the household, which I'd absolutely be in favor of. But as far as the policy itself, I, I don't think it's gonna solve anything and, um, it is a second amendment issue. And I, 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 I can't find one single time where it would have ever prevented or saved a life. That's all I have.
So, um, you know, I've been thinking a lot about this and. And, you know, I go back and forth, I should, I should, I should, I should. Uh, you were talking, Brad, you mentioned all the places that you can have firearms. And I looked up on my phone how many shootings have been in post-office, there've been over thirty of them. Since they passed that law, not having a firearm in, in the federal post office, you know, so. Uh, I, I guess the point I'm trying to say is, I, I kinda agree with Brad. I don't know if it would stop it or not. Um, if, if you had, you know, if our policy says you can bring concealed weapon, um, into the school, uh, you know, I, I don't think, um. I don't think that's the issue. I think, you know, it goes a lot deeper than that, and having children, um. You know, Fred answered a lot of my questions, but wondering how many of these shootings are from kids or actually from parents that come to school, you know, um. And it sounds like most of the children are, are, a majority of these children, you know, and, uh, just like. The suicide that we had here, you know, they weren't supposed to bring a gun in their car. In fact, I remember on, on a better board meeting several years ago, that somebody saw a gun in the backside of this guy's car, and the kid was expelled. You know, and it was just a hunting rifle. You know, uh, for shooting crows, in Little Case's grandson, you know, and, and, yeah, he didn't mean anything harm on it, but, um. You know. I, I don't know, I, you know, I haven't made my mind up yet. On, on, on what to do. You know, I understand wholeheartedly what our administration and our teachers are saying. I just don't know if, if that policy is gonna prevent it. It's like Fred was saying, a person that is really good at concealing a weapon, you're not gonna know it anyway. No, whether there's a policy or not.
Okay, well, for me. I want to provide a safe environment for our students. I don't see a reason to have firearms on campus. I know that when I was in high school, kids that hunted had weapons in their cars. Some of them went hunting before they came to school. Um. But that's not what we're talking about. With the violence that's about, I would like to support our administrators who prefer having the ability to ask someone. To leave their, their weapon in their vehicle and keep it locked. But that's my opinion. So, that's all I have.
So, so if, if. Say, uh, a coach. Has an irate parent there and, and he's going off on him and all of a sudden he sees. Now he raises his hand, all of a sudden he sees this concealed weapon. Do you think he's gonna take some time to say, hey, you can't have that in here? Well, that parent already irate. I mean, you know. I, I, you know, I don't know. Or would you start running? You know, I, I don't know. I mean, I laugh at it. It's not funny, but. Um. I, I don't know.
Well, it's not about the coach saying something, uh, to him. It's about the coach going to the principal and saying, this, this altercation took place. And it's a phone call then to, from the principal who says, hey, you know, um, you know, both, it's a conversation both about, you know. Not being irate at the, at our employees and being able to have a conversation, uh, in a, in a, in a both fashion, but it's also, hey, you know, um. We have a policy in place, and I'll give you a gun if you do next time you're in the talk, because that'd be much appreciated. So it's a conversation that happens after.
So I, I think we could have that conversation without this policy, and if we're truly. The objective here is to stop school shooters.
No.
Then what is the objective of this policy?
The, the objective is to, uh, that, in, in part, it's to stop school shootings, but it, but it, it's, it's grander than that. It's to. Uh, keep a safe school. It's to impact, um, uh. Uh, student safety and well-being, uh, in terms of anxiety and, um, heightened fear. Um, there's, um, um, the sense from, uh, the school personnel that because of the heightened. Violence in our society, that it has no place in our schools. And therefore, unless you're an armed, unless you're a, a police officer or somebody trained in doing it. Um, but the, uh, general, uh, visitor should not be able to have a gun in school and that, so it's, it's broader than just stopping a school shooting. It's. Because we don't think that this policy is gonna stop school shooting, but it is going to be able to allow us to help keep a safer environment in a. Um, if, if, if the situation were to arise. So maybe, maybe not a, uh, safer. In a physical sense of the word, but a safer in a mental sense of the word. Yes.
Christie?
You want to advance?
So back from the dawn of time. Recorded in biblical history. God set down ten commandments, one of them being thou shalt not kill. Was recorded in the Bible that. Came and able to have a little problem. And one of them, they come home one day. It's built into the core of every human being. Killing does not require training. Defending oneself. Does not require training. When you sit there and you think about it. You are to be in a very unfortunate position of finding yourself having to defend yourself. Generally. You have no warning. That an attack is imminent upon you. Generally, when unsuspecting individual is under attack. That individual has to assume that the individual that's attacking them is putting forth a hundred percent effort in their capabilities. Of doing things to an individual. Which requires the defending individual to use more than a hundred percent effort to stop that attack from happening. To make it end. Not to go beyond that, but just to make it happen. That can be done in a number of fashions. That can be done with your hands. And then with your feet, and done with a stick, and done with a rock. There's a myriad of defensive ways to survive an attack. The issue is, is that you have to do so. Is a policy something that can be used to stop an attack? You know? Is. To bring this a little further. To bring this a little further. Providing a safe environment at the school district for our kids. Keep an attack from happening, yes. What does that consist of? Consists of. Having on school campus security. That security uh will come in the form of a resource officer. That security. Will could come with administrative. Uh, education licensing. Uh, to be able to. Be able to take care of a threatened position from somebody that has. A concealed weapon. I'm not saying a licensed concealed weapon, but concealed weapon. That's a way of dealing with it. Do we have the funding for that? There is a question.
For SRO? So, um, uh, larger conversation, but, um, uh. There's enough funding to choose one or the other in terms of preventative and supporting mental health and S E L. Um, or having a person um with a gun in the schools. And, um, so we've made a decision that it's more important and more impactful. To um support kids and preventing violence or preventing suicide or preventing depression and that kind of thing. Using our money that way than, than somebody uh who walks around, um, you know. Um, uh, because those folks are very expensive and the, the chances of them um having, uh. You know, being useful and being used in a way that, that uh would prevent violence is very rare and very. You know, so far hasn't been needed, um, uh, whereas the other, you know, potential, you know, issues that we're dealing with is we feel money better spent.
Okay, so with that being said. It doesn't appear to me as though if a, if a threat was on the campus. That largely our school district couldn't be able to do anything about that individual if he wants to put forth. Uh, a threatening aggressive behavior shoots, shoot or not shoot somebody, we don't have anybody or anything set in place to deal with that. Other than law enforcement. Right?
To my knowledge.
Okay, the average response time for law enforcement in the Jefferson area when there's not a Jefferson deputy. Uh, in town. Is as little as eight minutes. As much as twenty to twenty-five minutes. And a lot of carnage can happen in that timeline. If I myself, I'm just using you as an example, happen to be at the district office for whatever reason. And. Somebody came in to do harm to somebody and I do not have concealed weapons carry permit. Uh, I will tell you all that right now. Uh, I have gone through two classes, just haven't had the time to find, to be able to get my fingerprints done and pay my dues in order to have. But if I had a concealed weapons carry permit, or if I was open carrying. Or anybody that was willing to do so, they could put their efforts and stop any carnage from happening. Just last week, an individual had the opportunity to do so, because he buried the concealed weapons from that. He was able to stop an individual, he shot three people and it would have shot more, and that individual not been taken down. And he's being hailed in some, um, courts as a hero and other courts. Um, he's been in this mess. You know, this is, was that on a school ground? No, it wasn't. Okay, it was in a public area. Um, Uvalde. This is, I'm, I'm big supporter of the men in blue. Uh, and I'm not going to talk down the situation. I'm not gonna critique it, if there was law enforcement there. Quite a bit of law enforcement, their policies and their procedures. Um, didn't work so well. I got scrollers. And clicking prompts today. And previous days, trying to find any indication that there's ever been a school shooting. On school channels perpetrated by an individual who had a concealed weapons permit. And actually had a weapon, I found that. As Fred said, most of the articles are politicized. One that I did find that was not politicized had links, and those links were disrupted, I would assume by Google. Most of the, uh, all of them, I mean, you know, uh, piggybacking on the thread. Most of these individuals that have, uh, have performed, uh. Nothing short of, might have been genocided schoolchildren on school grounds. But then committed by juveniles up to young adults. Um, none of them with illegal firearms or weapons that I could find generally. Uh, a relative's gun. Uh, or parents that allowed students to have guns. Their advisor done for them. We're, we're not in a disagreement that we want safe schools. I think the aggregate, the aggregate issues that I have surrounding this. Is that. We don't have a viable response time in this school district. We don't have an active police force that's here twenty-four seven. That's a problem for me. Another problem for me is that. We think that this is gonna keep us safe, it's not. If somebody wants to be harmed, they're gonna be harmed. Most. I will say most, I'm not going to say all. Uh, individuals who have gone through the process of weapons training, gone through A class. Gone through the process of, of uh having the fingerprints in the national database. I don't view them as a threat. What I do find is threatening is that. We've had some meetings. Here in this, where tension levels are pretty high. And I'm sitting here behind the desk, and we're trying to make a decision that, that affects. All of our students. And somebody in the audience. Uh, could potentially do me harm. And I have no way of defending myself. Your administrators, if somebody steps into their school campus, what do they have? To defend themselves? They don't. And it's only gonna get worse. It's gotten worse, it started back in seventeen, what, sixty-one, seventeen sixty-four? And the most recent one was Uvalde where nineteen souls lost their lives. Because they couldn't defend themselves. You can do I love you. I can't remember the, the name of the other program, bottom line is this school district is. Underprotected. And if we do this, we have to put signs up. Which lets the general public and all population know and understand. That inside that building, once they walk through that door, to do whatever it is that they're gonna do. There's not gonna be anybody to come against them. Very quickly. To stop them. And generally, when those people are confronted with deadly force. Most of them instead. Of shooting back, they're gonna commit suicide. Very few have been taken down versus individuals that have committed suicide when they're up against it in force themselves. So when I say it's gonna get worse. It already has gotten worse. And something different needs to happen. Whether that is. Metal detectors, screening of bags, backpacks prior to entering the campus doors. Granted, we've got locked doors. You know, you, you gotta press the button to get through, but in Uvalde. You went through a different door that was unlocked. One that was utilized and is not. Locked after its use. We don't have bulletproof, bulletproof glass in any of our campuses. You can break a window and crawl through. Taking away. This hamstrings a lot of potentials. Pause about come potentials. You have to use greater force. When an attack is being presented. Upon one's person. In order to stop it, sometimes people are successful, sometimes they're not. I am opposed to this policy. And at this point, the moral majority of the districts in the state of Oregon. Have not shown that. Uh, they approve of this policy, like there's thirteen districts. That have passed it, passed this at this point. Thomas Falls is one of them, you're all. Certain aspects of Portland, um, the whole Portland School District. In its entirety are still wrestling with it. Until we can do something better. I'm opposed to limiting myself. To defending myself or anybody else at this point. Until we can do better. Better to me would be an R S O. Or S R O. It's only gonna get worse. Until our legislators realize that. And funds su- school security. To its entirety across the whole state.
Thank you, um, so I'd like to address, um. This notion of unprotected, um, uh, both of you brought that up. And I'd like to, uh, give a different perspective, um, because I, I disagree, um, I think actually. Um, uh, we're probably, um. Uh, very safe. Not, there's not, there's always a risk, right? Um, but just to kind of tell you the system. And Fred, you kind of got into it a little bit. Um, we have an outstanding, uh, system that we're putting our resources. Into, uh, relationships with kids. So that if there's a kid who we feel is a threat. Um, we're able to identify that student. Um, and we've done this on numerous occasions last year where we did a threat assessment. Uh, with the E S D. And that they walked through this, the, the threat assessment, and if there's a, a, a greater threat, they go to the level two. And we call and we make sure, you know, we talk to the parents, is there, do they have, you know, access to guns? Um, and it gets to the point that if there's a real concern, uh, we will not allow that student to come back to school. Um, and we haven't had the habit to, to that level, we've just had some initial concerns, some, some threat assessments done. And we have our, I love you guys, protocol that's being used, um, you know, regularly. Where we are doing drills and we're talking with kids about what to do in certain circumstances. Um, and we're also talking about kids, you know, that, the idea that if there's a kid who comes to school with a weapon. Um, the best thing to do is for other kids to tell an adult about it, and we have that, we have that happening. Um, because our students are, one, because there's a residue from four years ago when a student brought a gun and shot himself. Um, but there's also, um, this, this notion of wanting to be safe and having a safe school. And so we have kids coming forward, um, and that's how we got the knife last year. There's a student came forward and said so and so brought a knife to the school, and so we went and we got the knife and did a search and got them. So, it, so much of school is relationships. And it's building those systems with the adult professionals like counselors and the student support specialists that we hire. With S, with the, uh, student success money, it's those kinds of things that prevent school shootings. I feel, um, uh, and we're gonna have, I'm talking with American County Sheriff's Office tomorrow. At two, because they wanna do some more practice drills and work at our school and build a plan. Uh, for safety after Uvalde, they wanna come do that, so I'll be talking with them tomorrow at two. And they'll be coming and partnering with us and we're gonna be doing some more engagement with them this fall. I feel that we're in a better space, much better space than we were four years ago for school safety. It's been something that we've really been working on and I think we're, um, because we're able to in- invest the money and get the right people in place. We're able to have conversations we weren't having four years ago. So I actually disagree that it's getting worse, I think we're getting better, maybe in a larger sense in the community, yes, than in our, in our district, I think we're getting better. I think that this policy again, is I'm not so worried about concealed weapon carrier shooting at the school. Um, you know, my, my understanding and take is these are the ones who are trained and probably, you know, the least likely to, to shoot at the school. Uh, I'm not so concerned about them coming in and being a shooter, I'm concerned about. Uh, guns being in our schools and people knowing about that and having a sense of unsafety. We wanna keep these safe zones, um, and we don't seem necessarily agree that. Um, somebody with a, a concealed weapon who just might on the off chance be at the school would be a deterrent from anything happening. We think that things that they're going to happen are going to happen. You know, um. It could happen at any time, any time of the day, but, but we feel that we have the enough relationship and enough um, investment with um, kids that we are not so concerned about. Um, that kind of incident happening. What we are more concerned about is when we have um, the, the level of, of um, anxiety where we have seizures happening every single day due to anxiety. Um, where we have to um, uh, uh, clear rooms and have adults in there, which completely stops instruction for two hours. And that's happening on a daily basis and it's, and it's spreading. Those kids, when you add guns or anything into the school, the, any kind of sense of violence only increases anxiety. And what we're saying is, is these are safe zones, just like a, a court of law. If you can't have it in the court of law, you can't have it in the school. We don't want it here. We don't, we don't care that you are gonna be a safe person with it. We just don't want the gun here. Um, we're not afraid of, of you using it. We're not afraid of, um. You know, we're, we also don't think that you're gonna be the guy who saves us. We, we just don't want the gun in the school, that's all. And then this policy, I know it's not, we may not even know you have it. But it just gives me, our, our administrators, the ability to have a conversation and say, you know what, it's a policy. Please don't do that. That's all.
Concealed carry. License holders, practice concealed carry. Ninety-nine percent, ninety-nine, I'll, I'll even step down. Ninety-eight percent of the time. You're not even gonna know, you're gonna do this carry, whether they're concealed license or whether they are non-concealed license. Happens all the time. Is having this policy gonna change? The way kids feel? Say no. Cause there's lots more than just this policy out there. Kids are having difficulties with. Court of law, not having a weapon in a court building. Not having a weapon in the airport. Various areas. There is firearms there. Helped by duly licensed individuals to perform a duty, which is security. You know, I've gone with this policy ever since I've been on the school board. And prior to you coming to this school district. I've wondered through the discordant or the, 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 very discouraging, um, negative atmospheres that have existed from time to time. And just what could happen if it gets elevated. Terry Conawati has experienced very vile uh, comments, circumstances. Himself prior to me being on the board while he was on the board. This whole conversation is relevant. There isn't a right or a wrong, but there is what's called reason. And we're working towards that. But when I say things are getting worse, they're getting worse. And they're becoming more frequent. And having a policy in place gives you the ability you think to confront an individual and ask them, hey, I noticed that you're carrying don't be the sake of the students and the atmosphere. Would you mind taking that out, putting it out in your vehicle? And then come on back in, we can have a discussion. There's nothing wrong with that. You don't need this policy to have teeth. At all. We don't need to do anything but make sure that our students are safe. And what I'm talking about an RSO. Go around and back up with this issue. And it's our job to make sure that happens. If we truly wanna make this school experience safe for our kids. Our job. So paper is what paper is, it's what, what the letters are written on. Words without action are nothing. So I advocate for an RSO. Or full-time law enforcement. And somehow we've gotta get there. Because I don't like this response time at all. Lot of damage can be done in that time. And if there's an individual that hears something's going down and there's no law enforcement here, they can come through the doors and eliminate threat. On to that. Is Dave on the, um, did you have a county seat council? Are they talking about full-time law enforcement?
Talking about three officers, that will take five officers to have twenty-four seven. And I believe they asked the
And that would be
I think it's, it's five days, we need twenty-four hours. That we've decided, um, we've been made.
One final thing. If at some point in time, while we're sitting in here conducting our business of doing the best we can to educate our kids and the parent is kicked off at us for an expulsion or whatever. And decides he's mad at the board. And I say out law enforcement here too, or each one of us have the ability to defend ourselves, or somebody in the audience has the ability to defend it. Something else to think about.
Well, Tracy, I know in the past when we have had touchy subjects, we've asked law enforcement to be here and they had. So probably you don't know. Can't predict the future.
Need further discussion?
I'm, I, I do just real, I, I agree with some of the stuff that Mr. Rose said and, and I, I, I don't know if I'm in full support of a physical barrier just from the few hours of research that I've done. And, and I also agree with some of the things that Brad has said that um, you know, uh, about what they're currently doing and everything and uh, I, I honestly believe that, um, if, if I'm hearing you right, Brad, that, you know, that those, those personal relationships are uh, probably gonna stop more violence than any physical barrier that we can put out there will. And they have some other benefits as well. Um, so, but one thing that I, I very much agree with, I, I don't care how this vote turns out. I, I, I think this board needs to be as supportive uh, as, as possible and uh, if only for the messaging to the staff and students that we do support, um, uh, reducing violence how, however possible. And I, I, I think we're gonna maybe disagree on how we get there. Whether it be physical, actual barriers to, to prevent violence from happening or the school resource officer, well, school resource officer, that's a physical barrier, right? Um, metal detector, bulletproof glass or whatever, I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm just personally me, I'm not convinced as to the right way to go about things, but regardless of how this vote turns out, I, I just wanna say that I'm still in opposition to this, but getting back to, to Tracy's point. Um, if there's more that we can do, even if it's a little bit more, it sounds like we, we got a pretty good system in place. But if there is more that we can do, we need to, we need to do that. We need to take action. I don't know what that action is, but uh, I just don't wanna see this get voted on and pass and die or you get it or have it fail and die this. We need to take action beyond this vote.
Brad, do you know if SIO or Cascade and have passes?
Uh, I don't think it's come up yet for them. Um, uh, I think Salem was due.
Yeah, you know, I never got a chance to listen to that meeting last night.
But they didn't have a, they, they, they sent out a, um, what do you call it?
Yeah.
A summary of what, the, what the, the recommendations. And, um, and they were, they were recommending to, um, pass it.
I think you'll see that in a lot of the bigger districts and the smaller rural districts, you know, it's like one or one Cascade or SIO.
Consensus wise. At this point. Fred, you said no to this policy, correct?
A hundred percent.
Tracy.
No.
Jerry.
I do not know you. Honestly, I do not know.
I believe this policy would give our district staff the district administration support to be posted that we're, we're not having concealed weapons. We're not, we're requesting that weapons not come on kids. Kids bringing weapons generally is a year of, um, suspension. But that's, and I don't even know what ORSA is. All I know is I've tutored kids who have been this a point because of choosing to bring weapons, firearms on campus. But I, I would support K G B person that we have a consensus.
One, one last thing, uh, you know, our person foremost. Uh, our children, but also our employees. You know, um, I just think of that when Kay was talking. It is our responsibility to keep them safe, to not make them feel safe for what they do. And, um, so that's why I'm just kinda like, like this with, with mine, you know, cause I know it is, you know, um, we have to give them the security of knowing. Not only as you said, Tracy and Fred, uh, that we support safety, that we're gonna do something. But, uh, you know, obviously the, the nine different people that came in and talked, I think got six or seven or more, um, employees in the school and they were all against it, or they're all for this policy. So just something to think about. It was a fifty-fifty. In my notes, wasn't it? Yes. And I'm not getting into the demographics of who it was. No, that's true. So keep in mind posted. One of the big topics of discussion out there is um, a signage gun-free zones. We have to post gun-free zones. I'm not just trying to stop students, I'm trying to stop anybody. And if they think that they're going to do that with equal greater force. Maybe they'll think twice.
The second item we have doing business was, um, coming up with what it was. As part of the strategic plan. The board's portion of the strategic planning for the district would be a vision statement, a mission statement, and clarifying values. And that would be done um, in such a way that we can get community staff participation to look at what we have presently and come up with a monitoring plan for what we've come up with. So one would be to participate in the process of giving the backbone or the skeletal pieces for this strategic plan. Which at this point, our pillars up there are part of which is, comes from our mission statement. We will prepare all students to successfully navigate the transition to life beyond high school by providing qualified, rigorous instruction. Providing safe environment and fostering a culture of student learning. Um, so if if that doesn't say what we wanted to say at that point, it's part of what you do when you get together. Reason board need to look at, is that one of the first things we want to do during this coming school year? Um, the strategic plan has to be included in paperwork that gets turned in in March? So this process would be completed. One of the areas that we were we rated ourselves a little low in was getting to visit the the schools and seeing school in session. And so I thought it might be appropriate that the school board members will visit this visit with the facility, visit facilities six times annually. During six times annually. With regard to BBAA, which is the policy that says we will notify the district office before we stop to visit the school. To do a trip. So we have a reason why we're going to be there. And then the other one that builds into working on the vision statement and mission statement is the board will set at least four work sessions. And participate in them annually.
Which is what we're doing right now.
This would be one for this year.
So, um, my question on visiting the school. Ken, I'm talking about this a little bit here. And I, is that each individual board member gets six times or, or represented in front of the board?
No, each board member doing his best they can, whether it be to a football game or whether it be to open house. Or if it's, I want to walk through and see how stuff is working or want to visit the facilities and see what's working and what's not working. Depends on what one's interest is. I mean, at one point, they didn't wanna the administration didn't wanna people only to come and only go to activities who had grandchildren in or children. They wanted you to check out other programs that were going on in the school.
But I mean, like, uh, this past year, Fred went and lifted over the, uh, all the equipment and and
That would be one of the, that would be a visit that he would do, yeah, yeah. When you guys, um, check out the pumps that weren't working. Or, um.
But relooking at all the blue lamps.
Right. That's checking out the facilities, whether it's checking out the actual programs, so those are. Those would be three things that I would like to see us do as a board.
Oh, the third one?
Third one is, is actually the, the vision statement, mission statement, and the values.
Oh.
With a monitoring plan, but that would be done also.
Through the work sessions.
Through the work session process, but. My thing is. Would we want OSBA to be the facilitator for us on our part of this? Or do we, or maybe our administrator knows someone that's local. Who has training to do the facilitation for us to run our community, get our community, and we get our community involved. To establish the mission statement.
I don't like doing this, Fred.
You like the three? And, and the reason I wrote this annual rather than, um. Because. I I'm hoping. That. Will come to a, a cycle of evaluation of the board. To a two-year cycle, because. To evaluate. Before you've spent much time on the board is very difficult. And hopefully, we can get some training in again to help things work better in that respect. But that way. I mean, that could be part of, so. Anybody else?
Um, Jim is, uh, I know that you. Currently isn't here, obviously, you know, he's got some, um. Circumstances, is he, is he, by chance, online?
No, I sent him the link and I called him, um. Twenty minutes before the meeting to see if he did any help, and if he didn't answer the phone. Um, so no, but I'm recording it, so I can, um, it's not live, or it's not being broadcast live, but I'm recording it, so I can send it to. Or he can access it from the website or whatever.
Okay, well, I'm glad. I was, uh. It will be given circumstances, I I like everything you're saying, man. Um, but in the spirit of good sportsmanship, making a significant decision like this.
This is not a decision, this is just a discussion.
Okay. Well, but I I certainly like to hear you in this discussion, but I like what you're saying, I don't know that six.
Six times in a year?
That's six in the mid, that's six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, thirty, that's thirty times, uh. That board members are gonna be making a phone call to the district office. To let the campus know that there's gonna be a board member on campus. What's the district's thoughts on that?
Um. If, um, if we can get more than one person at a time and do some tours, that would be better. Um, and that would allow us, um, uh. You know, perhaps we need to help, you know, to go with you and to go, and we can visit some classrooms, have some conversations. Um, which would be less disruptive to the school environment, and so in that way you can get, you know, two. Right, uh, two at a time, which would be, uh, uh, I think helpful.
So there'll be an odd man out.
And Chris, it doesn't all have to be.
During the school day?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I saw my, uh, elementary school after school's over and pop with Chris. You know, I didn't call for him. And, um, you know, to, cause then the school was out, and I just wanted to visit with a couple of things. It was great, and then if you go to a ball game or something, that's considered fun.
Now, let me ask you this, what, what about a barbecue?
Yeah, see.
Barbecue would be one of them.
And they're back to school night, you know, if you came to that, so I mean, those could be.
There, there's several activities, I mean, if you go to the play, you go to a music concert, um.
Well, barbecue is dangerous. Only from the standpoint that, you know, okay, from these school board members standing together, we can't talk about school stuff, okay? Um, two school board members can, but then those two school board members split up and then conversation ensues. Elsewise, I don't, I'm not saying that we're violating anything, okay, but it can be construed as. Um, pivoting amongst each others during a. Um, an event, I'm, I'm not forecasting, I'm just being realistic. You know, based upon some of the things that I've heard, discussions that have been had. Over the past four or five years, uh, things that I've been accused of. And found innocent, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're not doing anything that would. Pass the, um. Um, a darker sector amongst the board, so we have to be just gonna be careful.
That's fine, I agree with the, that statement, but I mean. If two or more people can show up at church.
Yeah, true.
Okay. Um.
Very true. Yeah, you just have to be careful, we just have to be mindful and have to be careful, that's all.
But we need to do that in any case.
Absolutely.
So I think the barbecue is a great plan to go, to be there, to be representative. To be so that the public can see who you are.
And, and you know, and this isn't mandated that we don't do, we kick off the board. It just gives us a goal to work towards.
You're saying we have to be careful?
Yeah, well, you know, speaking of that, one time I was negotiating. Contract with a young, uh, a younger board member. We don't know, I mean, younger, he hadn't been on board very well, and we're both at a ballgame, and he started talking to. To one of the representatives. About the contract, and I just happened to be standing there. And I said, no, 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 we can't talk about it, oh, we, we, we got filed against because of that, cause he brought something up. Even though I stopped him, you know, so you do have to be very careful. On what you said.
Brad, what's your opinion?
Six seems like a lot, no, I'm concerned about the disruption in the schools, and, and I, I loved my visits. Um, every single one of them, we were, we, we were the.
Right, we did summer school.
The, yeah, the summer school and, uh, the, the shop and, uh, I, I love them, I, I'm concerned that, um. I'm just trying to put myself in the district's position, and we, uh, you know, on our, on our mind sides, we're federally mandated in this. Uh, you know, on, on the road show or anything like that, I wish we were, but it's disruptive anytime you have a visitor and. Uh, it, this props work, and I would imagine it's the same way, I think the intention is good. Six times, uh, for each of us, even if it was in teams of two, uh, it seems. Seems like a lot, uh, and, and I'm saying that. If, if it's six, al- although seven, I, I enjoy the heck out of it, but I am, I'm worried about the district, so thank you.
Kay, what if you put each board member. Should try and visit at least four times a year?
I have no problem with that.
Outside, say, outside of. School activities or something like that, or no, we didn't.
No, I think, I think just. Facilities, interaction.
Interact.
Or activities.
And we could do our best to go in teams of two if it's getting a little, it's a little, it's a little hour, yeah.
Well, we could, we could set it up quarterly if there's going to be something that might be of interest, but I mean, like. To go to a play, they encourage the community to come as whole. Um, music concerts. They're not all on school campuses.
No, you know, and you know, at the beginning of the year, when, um. Brad has an introduction to all the staff, you know, a lot of us were there then. You know, um.
For the in-service week.
In-service week. So I, I think four would be pretty reasonable.
Okay.
That's what I would say. I'm not opposed to, whether it's four or six, or you can all do more, you can, and. Some of us might. Uh. We can't order me in as one and put twelve in.
No. Outside of board, board's primary duties.
Yeah, teaming it up is probably the best way to go about it. But a party says individually would probably be better. Either way, I think it's less distracting.
I think the, um, fewer visits. Um, are the better in terms of the distraction for the school. Um, but I think it's also important that you are part of, you know, come and see the school. And so, um, you know, the, the more we can arrange. Uh, visits with two and, you know, me, and, you know, it, they're gonna be used to me coming in, if I come in with a couple other people. Um, and we do it a few times, um, you know, it'll be fine, um, but, uh. Um, just the, the more it happens, the more disruptive it is.
Okay, I have a question, anybody else want to observe summer schools? Any?
I, I, I'd like to.
Okay, so you've got at least three board members that would love to visit summer school, and it starts next week, correct?
Yeah, and we could start Wednesday, they're gonna do a, at the elementary school, a solar, um. Exercise where they're, what was it, they're making something?
I didn't hear the whole competition you had with back out, but yeah, they're doing something fun and.
Are they do, doing some more?
I remember one time I went into a, I went into a classroom. Uh, that had more than the sink. And, uh, I was in there with, um. The bar superintendent. She started crying, she's getting fired. You know, I mean, so you're exactly right.
Well, she's not here anymore.
Yes, she is. Boy, she left and then she came back, uh. Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it, it can be, you know, when they, when they see a. You know, the superintendent, the board meeting, and, and a board member coming in, you know, I can see where it'd be a little bit disruptive.
But even when I walk through as a board member through the buildings and somebody says. You need to see this, they moved their chair. And there's a hole the size of a coffee can. In the floor, and it, my thing is, is that's an interesting hole. Have you talked to the safety person in the building first? What? Well, there, there's a safety committee and concerns need to go through channels.
Mm-hmm, there we have that.
Does anybody else have any suggestions on core goals, or do these sound reasonable?
No, I just wanna make sure that they're written down. And that they're measurable.
Well.
And it sounds like they are. And that they're achievable. So.
Yeah.
My one question is, are we doing enough?
Um, it's a beginning, we haven't done a lot because of COVID, we haven't done a lot because of other issues that the board had. But I know the big thing is, this is with. Um, the vision and the mission statement and the value piece. Um, that needs to be done. By. The middle of November, so that as the administration and staff build on the strategic plan. It makes. It has the framework to build on. And we get people involved early in the school year. Because, um. I think at least. Out of the, there are, are there seven or are there nine parts to that report that have to go?
Nine.
Okay, nine, of the nine, how many of them need input from the community?
Um, one. One or two.
Okay, so I know that the student success has, the S, the SIA needs. Community input and, uh, um.
Well, and the plan overall, so there's a needs assessment, you, you know, there's, uh, the whole mission vision is part of it. And so this will dovetail nicely, you know, into what the consolidated plan is asking us to do. And so, you know, they're gonna be saying, ODE is gonna say, did you do a needs assessment? Yes, did you have, did you bring parents and community members together? Yes. Did you, you know, has the board engaged in mission vision work? Yes. So all that work that we do in the fall is going to be added into the plan.
When we did it last time, Brad, we had, like, um. Between the teachers, I, I know there's at least seven community members here. I mean, the teachers, administrators, uh, custodian. Are classified. I think there were twenty or twenty-five people, we had like six or seven.
We had thirty people involved altogether. And it was over, I think, two. It was two or three sessions, it was three.
Yeah, it was three. It was good.
I have a professional facilitator in mind.
Okay.
I don't know if he's open or if he, if he has, um, availability, but I might say. Uh, you, you would say if I had somebody in mind, looking, I'd like to see if he's available.
Well, maybe talk to him sooner the better, because if we're gonna do this, we probably need to get started at it.
Well, we need to get started because we need to ask community.
Yeah.
To participate.
Okay, what did? When we went through this, I can't remember her name.
Christine Mills from OSBA.
When we went through that, Kay, um, I'm pretty sure anytime we do something like that, it costs us money.
It, it will cost us money, but we need to spend the money in order to do it in time and fashion.
It would be like, I, I, I guess we can't consider.
Well.
We can talk about the cost of board meeting.
Yeah.
My, last time it cost us like, uh, a thousand dollars.
It was more than that, cause it was part of the scholarship.
Yeah.
So twenty-five, twenty-five hundred, but that.
And then we got three thousand back, so we, uh, could be, you know. You know, we worked for that scholarship on children.
Brad, uh, I think it's, you know, with that being said, it's important, uh. For us to understand the cost affiliated with this individual. Um, I don't know if you. Figure that out by ourselves. Um. Deciding it. So we've got some kind of, you know, maybe. You know? I would think that that would be what works.
Yeah, no, I, I'll talk to him soon, and, and we'll chat, and I'll just see if he's open and available, and then I'll ask him to. I only know a question not much.
Thanks.
Okay.
I didn't hear what you said.
I was asking Brad if he could potentially determine what the overall cost would be associated with.
That's true, but I think the other thing you want to do when you do this is we want to also provide. Our. Something so that people, when you're here for three hours, you need to take a break.
Yeah, I, I've said it before, you go off a beer, and you get more people you wanna know to come in.
Yeah, but we don't want beer on people.
No, I don't want.
All right, so.
We just see Kay's along the wall.
So if you will check. Brad, if your source and see what possible dates, um, question, gentlemen, um. Do, would you want to do work sessions, what night of the week? Should we stick with the Mondays?
I don't like Wednesdays, I'm missing so much church.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I think, I don't know how many Wednesday meetings I've been there.
Okay, that's fine.
Mondays are sick. Mondays are sick. Cause Fridays in the winter, you start at ball games.
Right.
So.
Brad, what about you?
Mondays are the meeting.
Okay, so we'll try and set the meetings for Mondays. Um, what? We had done in the past. Originally, when I first came on the board twelve years ago, um. Second Monday of the month was our regular board meeting and. Second Monday of the month was our regular board meeting, and if we were going to have. A. Work session, it would be the fourth. But I'm thinking. We wanted, we don't want to spread this out over a long period, we would like to keep it thirty days. Forty days at the most from start to finish on getting it done. So it might be. A school board meeting, two work sessions, a school board meeting, and a final work session possibly.
Yeah, a lot of it, a lot of this depends upon the person that facilitates it.
Right.
Because, you know, I know we like to do Mondays. Uh, a lot of times they have something going on too.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
Does it, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other board comments that you'd like to make for this evening? I appreciate the fact that we've got the screens working.
First off, thank you first off.
Thank you, Chris.
I have none. I just wanna, did you say something?
I have none, oh, I just wanna say that.
Um, having been helping. Dialogue. And discussion is essential. To successful boardship. Or anything. And. Being unified. As a board. Is very important as well. So whether this policy, if if this policy is passed. I support the role of the board. But I'm glad, Katie, you asked for a consensus. Prior to. Because that's good clean discussion, okay? So regardless of whichever way it goes, you know, for any of us. It's important that we. Have board immunity. In this. And uh. Keep our external comments. Um, about this particular position in check. Because we're, together we're one, individually we're none.
True.
You know, one, one thing of about it, Tracy and um. And and Fred. You know, you're real big on doing what the community wants. And you know, constituents of this district wants, and it'd been nice if we had a very clear. Answer on what the the, what the community and, but we really didn't, you know, get a clear answer. We didn't get a lot of participation, it'd been nice if we had, you know, fifty people. Come here in the work session, and we didn't do it either way, no, I know, we didn't, it's fifty tickets that, you know, so um. Makes it a bit more, it does.
Fred, any other comments?
I have none.
All right. I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-two.
So Dewey's gonna watch this, and it's just gonna be pictures of me sitting here the entire.